Okay, it's now over with a college board supervisor meeting and I'll read this order. Um, Mr. Rattrick, might give us the indication?
Let us bow his, Father, we thank you today of God for allowing us to see another day. Father, we just ask so God that you move in this meeting today of God. Father, we just pray for our elected appointed officials, Father, continue to keep them in your perfect will, God. Father, keep their protection over them and their families and as they go forth doing your will for your people. Father, we continue to pray for this community, we pray for this city, this county, we pray for this state and this country of God. Father, continue to keep us close together, God. And Father, we just ask so God that you move in this midst of God. And Father, we just want to pray, just want to pray for our first responders, our teachers, our kids. Keep them safe in our school system of God. Father, we just continue to pray for all our county workers. Father, continue to pray for all the businesses that you see coming to this county of God, that they may prosper, God. And Father, we just pray for ones that may have lost love once, oh God, Natchez Adams School District, oh God. Father, continue to keep them up, we lift them up in your prayers, oh God. And Father, we just ask so God that anyone that may have lost their love once, oh God. Father, we ask that you come through, God. And Father, we just ask these prayers in prayer, Son Jesus' name, in the name of the Father, in the name of the Son, in the Holy Spirit, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. All right, well, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do a quick roll call here, Mr. Gray.
Present.
Ms. Hudson? He's on the phone.
Yes, here, I'm here.
Uh, Mr. Gaines? I should get you in here in a few minutes.
Mr. Milton?
Present.
Ms. Dean?
Present.
Ms. Lewis?
Present.
Mr. Slover?
Present.
And Ms. Khan?
Present.
And we do have a sheriff up here, Shane, in the back there. Let's go. Want to start out, start out by telling y'all, uh, I went to Oxford earlier this week and, or later last week, to Turning Point USA. Um, President Vance was there along with Ms. Kirk. And, um, to see that many students fired up about going to something that was religious and also political, mainly religious. Uh, like four thousand people got left outside in the rain, ten thousand got in. Uh, it was, it was just amazing thing and I, I like to see what's going on in this country with the, with the youth. Um, but I just wanted to tell y'all how nice, just to see that, uh, Mitzi, did, your kids did not make it in?
They did not make it in. I had one of their friends-
They even stopped the older people, anybody had gray hair couldn't get in for the most part. Uh, they wanted the young people there because that's what that was for, but it was really mean. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes for October. Moved by Mr. Milton. I'll second it. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, uh, I think that October thirteenth special call meeting, it was two motions made, excuse me, and they got on here that, uh, motion was made by Supervisor Hudson, seconded by Supervisor Milton, and unanimous been carried, both of them unanimously been carried. Uh, that's not correct because I wasn't even in the meeting, I walked out. After the special call meeting was over with, I walked out of the meeting because to my knowledge, I thought the only thing you could talk about at a special call meeting is whatever you had on the agenda. And this wasn't on the agenda, so I wasn't in here, so you need to change the minutes to reflect that I wasn't part of that. Thank you, Mr. President. Excuse me.
Any more discussion?
Was that special call or out of recess?
Out of recess, but the ball's changed, we have to advertise out of recess as well, sending forth your special things to do. I talked to Mitzi about that after.
When did that change?
Twenty twenty-four.
Okay, why wasn't there no time that it was changed while we were having the meeting and it was changed? And the first thing I asked you was to leave us to have that.
I thought I sent an email document, I'm sorry.
Okay, changes are gonna be noted. All in favor? Any names, motion carried. I need a motion to approve the docket. Moved by Ms. Milton, seconded by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names, motion carried. I need a motion to approve the financial reports for the Adams County Sheriff's, I'll change the clerk and first to report. What? Monthly annual report, wait.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Milton. I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names, motion carried. Do we have anybody here for a special presentation?
No, 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 got you.
No, you're the next one, I bet. All right, no special presentation, county business, Rhonda Page, Central Boys and Girls Club.
Good morning, good morning, Adams County. Uh, I am Rhonda Davis Page and I act as the advisor and facilitator for the Boys and Girls Club unit in Natchez. And so very excited to hear that you are excited about youth because that's what the Boys and Girls Club is. So, the, um, Boys and Girls Club of Central Mississippi has decided to partnership with the Natchez Adams School District in trying to bring a unit here. Um, if you don't know much about the Boys and Girls Club, it's evidence-based, structured, and it is also a spirit-based institute. So, this is about all children in Adams County. Uh, we are trying to initially start the unit at Morgantown Elementary, but our goal and our hope is to have various sites across the county to provide different services to all children. Uh, I'm currently trying to engage high schools, middle schools, elementary schools, churches, businesses. I have been meeting with the chain of commerce, I have been meeting with the Natchez Business Fund specifically, to have everybody involved. So, we're having our stakeholder meeting, some of you may have received a notice, uh, November seventeenth, which is a Monday. Uh, I'm told this morning that Adams County wants to do their jury duty that day, so we will work to change our location. It'll either be like Braden or actually at Morgantown itself, but I'm encouraging all of you to attend. Um, I think that the perception has been that we're only aiming at certain districts, we're aiming at all districts. Um, we want anyone who has any resources in their budget to participate in bringing the Boys and Girls Club here. We're going to complement the school system by being able to provide leadership, youth development, um, educational, and, um, uh, different types of arts and crafts and entertainment programs for our children. And I do say all children because I think all, the kids in the county are all of our children. So, hopefully, uh, many of you today will be able to participate. I know you have a scheduled meeting that morning, but once your meeting is over, I do encourage all of you to come and attend the stakeholder meeting. And if there are other people throughout the county who have not received anything from me and would like to participate on helping the youth in this county, I encourage you to simply email me or contact me in any way and I will make sure that you're on the list for that invitation. But I would like to know, are there any questions from the county supervisors regarding the Boys and Girls Club unit in Natchez?
Do you have volunteers for it already lined up?
We have some, but I, we need many, many more. I don't think the perception of, of the Boys and Girls Club is clear. We need volunteers from schools, from churches, I've talked to some retired teachers even about serving as an advisory, um, but also from different, I guess, uh, businesses in the area. So, for the Boys and Girls Club, we want to partner with workforce development, we want to partner with the coding academies, any institution that's doing robotics, anything that is going to enable young people to have different options in the county. Um, some of the statistics, uh, Adams County is scary, but I think youth need options and I think parents need other choices to try to, you know, navigate their children too. So, if you are a volunteer for woodwork, electrician, plumbing, carpentry, arts, crafts, anything of, of that nature, we encourage you to contact us and we can see how we can work with you to be able to develop the children.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. President, I'm just, uh, glad to see that Boys and Girls Club is working this way, thank you, Natchez. I think, uh, it's gonna be one of the best things they ever had to this community to have a Boys and Girls Club. Thank you, Mr. President.
Where, where are you from?
I'm from Natchez.
Okay.
I'm from Natchez, I, I haven't lived here formally for about forty-five years, but I'm back.
Okay, the chapter, um, it, it originally was gonna be from somewhere else and then, and they moved it up in a different, um...
Well, originally, we were talking with McComb.
Okay.
The southwest Mississippi Club is the closest, um, only a few miles, but they were the initial interest in Natchez, but they have a Natchez school program now and they are down like two staff, so they don't have the capacity to follow through. I have been to Jackson to events with the, the board for Central Mississippi and if you would like to go, I think you'd be amazed at the things they do. They have three locations, but they have an amazing program in where they provide food and educational and training resources to children every afternoon in school, as well as they have a summer program that feeds children three times a day. And I think in this economy and in this political environment, families are struggling and they need other options to help them. And one way is to have something here that works with the children so that parents can focus on other things for their families. So, again, um, as Mr. Gray said, if you know anything about the Boys and Girls Club, it is proven to, uh, reduce truancy, to reduce delinquency, to reduce repetition in school, and all of these things can cost money. It works well with reducing children involved in crimes and I am told as of twenty twenty-five, there have been youth involved in at least tw- uh, twenty-seven murders in the county. So, for me, that's a scary statistic. And so, I think anything we can do to work on that is gonna help everybody in the community, as well as the businesses here as well.
All right, do you have a number they can call?
Uh, my number is four zero four six two five five two nine seven.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
City government business, if any. Scott, where are we in city government business?
Elaborate on your answer.
Should I turn it over? Oh, are you gonna do the E report? Okay. Two got a public hearing, we need to open for a public hearing? For one forty-six Palatine Road, or is that, is somebody here from there?
We can open it up if you want to angle it out. It's a minister operate, we usually do those during the report.
Okay. All right, departmental reports.
Good morning, Hannah Fells from Adams County, getting that one one. And I'm given a number of the calls that we had for the whole month of October. That was from October the first to October thirty-first. Natchez PD had eight twenty-nine, Natchez Fire Department had forty, Adams County SO had five sixty-one. Also, I'm asking for approval for, uh, the nine one one, um, software for our department, which is Viber and Rapid Esolix, this state contract that I gave out a copy of, um, for the approval.
What is this for?
That's for our nine one one software, for our nine one one calls. We have call works right now, but they're about to go out and get another nine one one, um, software.
It's like two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars upfront and then thirty-five hundred a month?
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Is this good at the new location?
Yes, it's by the new location.
Because it has listed three oh six State Street.
That's what it's called, um, too.
I can review the contract, I guess.
We'll have them in the budget, because I did not have this in the budget.
Okay, we're gonna take it under advisement until you can figure it out.
How much you said it was?
Two hundred, what? Two hundred and eighteen thousand upfront and thirty-five hundred a month. Will this replace the other?
Yeah, it's replacing the other one that we have, because this last one was fifteen.
Were we paying it monthly?
What we paying it?
What, ten grand?
Thirteen, thirteen, thirteen thousand.
Are they gonna give any of that money back? Because they said they would, but...
But that's not for the phone line, that's for our software.
So, it's a phone line?
Yeah, the phone line, uh, AT&amp;T phone line, we still working on that, they're, they're gonna reimburse us some of our money back on that.
Okay, so what's the reason for the change?
Uh, we have call works now, whether nine one one, Annie, and Addams, and that, that's gonna be over with, so we're, in our new building, we're adding Viber and Rapid Esolix.
You can't use the other one?
That, that one is about to end, that's what they told me, it was the Motorola. And Motorola never comes down to fix anything that's broken, but they're on anyway, they want you to, uh, remote in with your own hand.
With the system, system probably put ten years old.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, they did, they moved on.
I just think it is mission research, you know? I mean, it's a big price difference.
Well, this is new equipment, the two eighteen is new equipment.
Let me explain.
Software.
Yeah, um, Viber is an AT&amp;T product, uh, that's what they sell as far as a nine one one platform, for as answer nine one one calls. Uh, the, the reason she went with Viber because AT&amp;T has all the nine one lines, trunking lines. So, it'll be easier, uh, when they transition to stay with the same company, get the same business, we'll get the same benefits. Uh, we previously went with, uh, we, we transitioned from AT&amp;T when we first decided because their price was kinda high. So, we went with a different nine one one call, uh, call handler. Motorola bought that small company out, so that's, that company that she's talking about is a Motorola product, they bought it out. We don't, we would, she wanted to go back with AT&amp;T to keep everything simple. Um, and by that doing that, the, the rollover would be much simpler on that. I know everything is a little pricey on that, that's, you know, that's pretty much where you're gonna go, you're not gonna get nothing, you know, probably much cheaper, uh, with that. And with that being said is, if it's their product, they can transition, make the transition easy because they make that product. And if the transition from here to the new site would make the transition much better than go over to a different company, trying to make those merge on that. Uh, but that quote is, that's, you know, the going rate for full positions, uh, for a nine one one center, all that. Um, with that being said, um, the state legislature had passed a law, President Wilson spoke last time about the money freed up, so starting next year, we gonna start seeing those monies being put back into our nine one one centers, all that.
We hope? Do we hope we see it?
No, we are, yeah. It's, it's legislated, so the Mississippi Emergency Communications Authority that follows on the Mema, they taking over that now, so we had a meeting last week, we gonna start seeing some of that money roll out. So, it's the state legislative, we've already passed, uh, I think we adopted our changes maybe what, two years ago, uh, for the change of the phone bill, so we're, we're already set up, so we start seeing that money come in, uh, it's gonna start coming in. But, you know, in defense of that, um, that's gonna probably be the cheapest way to go, uh, statement AT&amp;T on that.
I mean, my, my hesitancy here is, we've had, we've had budget hearings for the last two months, we heard nothing about this.
Right.
When did we know the change was coming back? And here we are, talking about using money that we hope we're gonna get next year to pay for money we're spending now. I mean, that, that's where the problems get created.
Right.
You know, we've got to know when we budget, there, there had to be some, some information about this two months ago. It's coming to an end, well, somebody had to know. And we can't plan for these things if we don't know.
Right, and it's, it is not in their fault, you know, as nine one one coordinator, I was out the picture a little while, now I'm getting back because the way we normally do this, we prevent one budget and we put it all on a lease purchase. Everything goes on a lease purchase, like we did last time. So, now, that's what we're trying to do, go back and get all these quotes, everything we're going to need, put on one lease purchase, uh, that's with everything, radios, the nine one center. And I did, I asked for, because a lot of these, these systems, you gotta pay money as a maintenance fee. You have to pay, you can't get around those. Uh, so that's where the thirty-five hundred comes in there, on the new system. Like, right now, we paying AT&amp;T for their lines, we're at thirteen thousand dollars. That, that, when we do the transition, that's gonna decrease. So, we would have money freed back up to go into the new system.
Thirty-five hundred, thirty-five thousand?
No, thirty-five hundred a month. That's the maintenance, that's what you, you know, they, you have to add, and that's what they do to check the system and it's just, you know, just to make the costs affordable.
And we're currently paying how much?
We're thirteen?
Thirteen thousand?
Yeah. Because everything over there is pretty much AT&amp;T. So, once we get to the new system, we can switch to ceasefire, which will cut some of our costs on our phone lines and stuff like that. We will not need plain old telephone lines.
So, it's an upfront cost of two hundred and eighteen thousand?
Right, but what I'm saying is, if you put that on a lease purchase like we would normally do, we would have to, we have to pay it maybe the next following year. Uh, I think that's what we did on the lease purchase, when we went to the banks. But that, that's a board call on that. If you want us to try to find a cheaper route?
I just think we need to weigh our options, we need to make sure-
Okay.
Get the best thing for our world. You know, nine one one is very important, I'm not sitting here saying we don't need to do what's right, look, we need to do our homework.
Okay, so, yeah, we, we'll look for, we can look for-
He's got it reviewed anyway, so we've got time.
And I'll get with the neck, and right, we've already talked, if we're just cleaning, sit down and make sure we've got everything that we foresee coming and do one budget adjustment.
Oh, I wanna add one more thing. I went to a lot of conferences and demos, uh, for nine one one and I saw a lot of software. This one here is gonna benefit us because it comes with the stuff we need. It comes with translation and it also comes with text nine one one and all of it is included in our next gen nine one one package. So, even if we went to somewhere else, they sell it separate, I mean, which is costing more money. That's why I chose that one, because everything's in one package.
Okay, thank you. Is this like part of the, the equipment that you're intending on buying, is that, this is a mention of that?
No, this is the nine one one software that we have for our Annie and Ally when you call into nine one one. Right now, it's call works. Call works is with Motorola. They're about to end, that's what we're having a problem with now, while we keep calling text and it can't text because it's at the end of the line. So, we swapping over AT&amp;T where everything would be under that AT&amp;T.
Uh, Mitzi, this is for something I just did?
A couple weeks ago, when, uh, she sent me the draft, but, and then that's when I asked Shay and Brad that we needed to get together and make sure we didn't have anything else hanging out there that we need to do in the budget.
Did we get that other AT&amp;T issue resolved?
I can't, anybody call me back.
That's a problem with AT&amp;T.
Well, I have still one thing. I have a tick down there now, just hold on a circuit to try to get the calls down. But once we move, they said they could come up to some when we move to make sure the call is down on that phone bill, but they're gonna reimburse us.
Okay. Departmental reports, who's next?
Morning, board.
Morning.
Second minor veteran service officer for the county. Uh, I have a few things that, uh, I wanna present to you guys today. First is the, uh, veteran turkey giveaway, which will be on, uh, Saturday, November the twenty-second, from, uh, eleven o'clock to two P M. And it's, uh, gonna be, uh, until the turkey's last. And it'll be one, uh, turkey per home and the veterans or the family member will have to show proof via D D two fourteen or, uh, B A I D.
So, you guess for the veterans?
Yes, for veterans, yeah.
Go ahead.
Professor, I have a question for us and I-
Yes.
Uh, got a question. I know one year they was having a problem with other people picking up turkeys for veterans, like their father, something like that. Uh, is there gonna be a problem this year about that? Because I know, uh, their father sits naked and a child was trying to come pick up the turkey for them and it required of them to get it.
Uh, we'll, we'll work that issue as, as it come in, I don't think it'll be a problem. Uh, long as, uh, your father has contacted them, that I can contact them, or if they're already in the system.
Okay, okay, great.
Only, only thing I gotta say is, uh, I think that's something good for the community and for the veterans. I just hope it don't get out of hand, man, because it's gonna be so many people, uh, that's without right now and they hear about the turkey giveaway, they might wanna come out there and try to get them a turkey too, man, because with, with, and all I hear was going on and all the people laid off and, and all the benefits being cut. Uh, me as one supervisor, I just think, uh, this community, I mean, the whole entire community that needs to get together and come up with a gaming plan and try to, uh, assist and help these people. It's, it's gonna be without their benefits, because, you know, as I keep watching the news and hearing people, uh, kids gonna be affected, they disabled, they, they need their medication, they're not gonna get their, they're gonna get their medication because they don't have their benefits no more. And, I mean, as a community leader, we need to try to find some ways to try to do whatever we can, uh, to help these people. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, on that note, I think every church in, uh, in the area has started a food pantry or, or taking out food for, for people. Uh, I know that's one thing the church is doing, that they used to do a lot more of that, um, but for the time being, they're starting over again and, uh, they are doing that.
Uh, just to add one more, uh, note to that, uh, turkey giveaway, it will be for Adams County residents only.
And, uh, I say, you have to have a copy of the D D two fourteen, which is your, your parchment, paper.
Yes.
Or, or, or either one?
Yes.
Both probably, huh?
Uh, e- either one.
To prove the residences?
Well, yeah, uh, yeah, I check their driver license when they come in, but I'll be the one that denotes them.
And you know, or have most of veterans on your list already, you know, that's, that are from Adams County?
Well, not, not most of these, uh, because a lot of veterans, what they would do, they'll, they'll go to, uh, they were going up to the regional office to, uh, take care of that business or they're gonna have somebody else do it for them. Uh, give a warrant, which, you know, it comes from something, and start coming down to our office where the service is free. They don't have to go out of town for it or, the only thing they have to do is go to the, just go to their doctor for them. Make those appointments for, uh, for their claim.
Listen, now, let me tell you this. And this is not the negative, because you just got this position, but people go where they trust people. If they don't have no trust in whoever's doing something, then they not coming. So, you gonna have to be able to trust in the veterans that wasn't there before you got there, as I would say.
Yeah, I understand that go, go, those, uh, bridges are being repaired, the relationships are being repaired with the veterans. There's a lot of veterans that's coming in there and they're telling the people from, from even, uh, across the river and different counties that's coming down to, you know, they, can you help me? So, uh, those relationships are being repaired and, uh, it, it is a spike in the numbers of veterans coming down there. But, like I say, some people you just, they just feel more comfortable, they're a replica of the Lord, which costs them some money. And we do the same service for free. Because they think their, uh, their claim is looking quicker and that's not the case. Uh, the second thing I have is, uh, Veterans Day at Zion Hill, uh, number one. Uh, they're having a Veterans Day, uh, service on the night. And, uh, registrants put the veterans start at seven thirty in the morning and the service starts at, uh, eight.
All right.
And, uh, Natchez Adams County, uh- And, uh, Natchez Adams County, uh, Natchez High School have their annual Veterans Day program on the tenth of November, and that starts at, uh, two o'clock in the afternoon.
All right, anything else?
No, that's all I have, unless y'all have any questions for me.
Should I do me a favor?
Yes.
Would you ask for us to put this thing on our calendar?
Yes. I, I'm sure I have what you need.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Nick?
Good morning, Mimi Price, person for, for Adams County. On October thirty-first, we had bid openings for, um, motor grader, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-five or greater. We had two bids submitted. First bid was bucket, three hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and five cent, five-year, twenty-five hundred hour previous warranty, five-year buyback, a hundred and seventy thousand, includes travel time and mileage. The second bid was with John Deere, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand and five dollars and twenty-four cents, three-year, twenty-five hundred hour buyback, a hundred and eighty thousand, four-year, thirty-five hundred hour buyback, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, decided bucket is for, I mean, um, John Deere is the most, the best bid at two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars and five, twenty-four cent, with the hundred and eighty thousand dollar buyback, three years, and a hundred and sixty thousand dollars buyback, four years. I bet with Robbie as well.
Sir, move on.
Move on, Mr. Middleton. Second, Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names, most prepared?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, boy. I have, uh, two items. One of them is a raise for Zachary, wa, uh, actually, pay increase, normal pay increase, Zachary Washington. I think you have the paper up there, going from fourteen eighty-three to sixteen thirty-three.
I do.
It's just a routine raise for him.
All right, you heard the request?
So?
Second, Mr. Gray. Second, Mr. Gray. Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. President, if, uh, when you say raise, is, is it like a step raise, and there's some-
This, this is the, this is the, the normal, uh, pay grade thing that we have in place. We just make it to the top tier.
They didn't, they didn't just get the two-dollar raise?
Yes, he did, but there was a discrepancy with his, with his raise on that, and, uh, it would hit odd number, so, uh, you know, I, they said I needed to come before you guys to present that, so that's what I did.
So I, I tried to keep him in the same tiers as he had.
Okay.
So.
All right. All in favor? Uh, any names, most prepared?
My second piece of business is the painting of the detention center. Uh, we, we get inspected at least quarterly by the state, and, uh, they give us a couple of time for the paint over there, and we're just trying to get that squared away. So we put out, uh, we, we called some contractors, and let them do a walkthrough, and show them exactly in detail what I needed done. And, uh, out of those, uh, that I called, only a handful responded. Out of the ones that responded, there was only a couple of them that, uh, seemed professional enough to do it to the standard that we needed done it. And I have two bids on them. Uh, one of them is fifteen thousand something. And the other one is right at nine thousand, eight thousand, I think, seven oh eight.
The same thing?
Yeah, and the difference is, one guy is key into hours, and the other guy is key into, to, uh, efficiency. He's, he's got a larger crew that come in and knock it out, and they, and they get out of there. And the detention center, which we, we, in the process of the painting, we're going to have to have kids actually in there. So we're going to shut down one block at a time, do that block, let it dry, and rotate to the next block, move kids to another place. So actually, while this is going on, our capacity is going to be reduced by twenty-five percent. We have, we got four cell docks over there, we got to shut one down while their docks are being painted. And so, it needs to be done efficiently, effectively, and needs to be done, uh, with attention to time deserves. And, and this gentleman here that I'm going to choose, out of all the ones that I talked to, he was a more professional. Uh, he, uh, it was detailed in his description of how he was going to paint, and what kind of materials he was going to use. And I think overall, he's the best one anyway. Not only is he lower than, uh, this other one, but he seems to be the most professional.
He going to do it the way you want it to be?
Yes. And I'm going to have time to inspect one block before he goes on to the next one, to make sure that it was done to standard. Because, uh, the, the last time it was done, it was, I was, I'm not a painting expert, you know, but after it, uh, we got painted it years, years ago, uh, come to find out, he was using the wrong kind of paint, he didn't, he didn't use primer, he didn't prep the area good enough, and as a result of that, it didn't last as long as it should have lasted, so. You know, we're trying to avoid that this time.
So you're on the lower bid?
Yeah, the lower ones are these, these two, because I have some bids that I'm part with, but the lower one I'm choosing, that's what's prices concerned. But when I talk to them, they, they didn't, they didn't have the, uh, the efficiency factor in mind. They can do it for the same price, but, uh, they can't get in there and get out. And that's why I need them to get in there and get out.
So these your lowest and best bid?
Yeah, it, it's, it's, it's not the lowest bid, but out of the ones that are in that price range, he's the most efficient one.
Did you work with purchase in with this?
Yes, yes, we did.
So, we would need all your written bids, and you need to articulate it while you're going with the less-
Yes, we're going to do that.
Well, the two bids, the two bids that I received, uh, I only received two bids. So I don't know outside of that, other ones. Um, the one that was for fifteen thousand and the one for eight. So that's what I looked at the lowest and best bid as, I wasn't aware of any other ones that you gave though.
Yeah, and, and, uh, I, I, it's my understanding that it didn't have to be bid in on per se. But that, but that's totally, but I had to have at least two quotes to do the work.
Now, you got to have two written bids, and they got to be competitive, at least two written bids.
Okay.
And they got to be competitive.
Okay.
And if you're going with one that's not the lowest, you have to articulate why you're not going with the one that's not the lowest. So if you receive more, you would articulate which, why you're doing, which one you're doing. That's just required by the statute.
Okay, I did, I think I did put that in, in the email that this was. I mean, presentation means a lot when somebody comes into your place to, to apply for a job, right? And when, and when you talk to the person, and you listen to them, and look at their presentation, some of them just, you know, they didn't look like they were really professional. And out of, and, and talking to them, and the way they described how they work, I wanted to impress them. So, you know, when you go with the very lowest bid, like we did the last time, you're going to get the lowest quality work, in my opinion. You got to go with the one that is going to do the best job for the money, do it to standard, so it might be going on with us in a couple of years.
So, listen, Terry. What do they need to do to get the person that they need, that he feels is going to do the job right?
Got to read the statute too, I'm just saying.
So did the other, did the other individual give them a bid, uh, or what?
Yeah, they, they did give me some numbers on, um, uh, what, what they were charged to do it. A couple of them were saying they needed the, the materials paid for by the county upfront, you know what I mean? And, uh, and, kind of, one of the guys that was going to work, he was the only one that was going to be working, you know what I mean? And he, the way he, the way he described it, it did sound like he was doing a, an effective job, but there's no way I could shut down a block long enough for one man to do all the painting that needs to be done over there. And, and I need this process to, I'm, I'm not going for speed only, but, but speed is a factor, you know what I mean? It's not B factor, but it's A factor, you know? And he did sound like he would do it to a high standard, but he's the only worker on this crew.
Like, take my money, add you one room.
That's right.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, we, and we can't afford to have that traffic all that time and shut down twenty-five percent of our capacity while that process is going forward.
And you definitely consider speed and, you know, warranty of their work and that sort of thing. You just have to articulate, this one costs X, this one costs Y, this one costs Z, and then, this one's guaranteed to be done, you know, within a week, versus this one's going to take three months. And that would quickly hinder your ability to operate, if you were a pension facility.
The money to the every bid, or just one of, um, um, put, put it forward to you guys?
Yeah, this, you're, me, well, since you've got, you solicited and got bids, they all need to be presented, and you determine why you're going with the one that you're going with, why you're, you know.
Run, articulate on each one of why I'm, I'm rejecting it.
You need to spell out, this one costs, list all the ones you received, and their cost, and why are you choosing this one, which is not the lowest, but why it's the best? And if it's speed and then what they can do it, or the fact that they guarantee their work longer, any of those things can come in, you just have to articulate why we're choosing one, not the other. And it makes a lot of sense, if you can get a, being a juvenile detention facility, you want to be able to house juveniles. You want to, what are you going to do with those juveniles, particularly you have a female dormitor? What are you going to do with that, and that one's closed down?
Exactly.
They got to go somewhere, and that's a big, that's a big problem for the juvenile court.
Right.
But anyway, you just have to articulate it, and list out all, all the ones that you did, and, and then you probably could have gotten that done, had we, had you given them to them.
Yes, yeah, I did, but it's, it's there, it's there, and this, and in other words, I need to give you the entire list of everybody that I got bid from, and why I rejected them, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, if you do that, we'll, I'll email it back over to Mimi and make sure it's
Okay.
Reported on the minutes, and then make it accepted.
All right, I see that. At all of it.
When, when do you need this done, Brad?
Well, uh, I would like to get started on it sometime in November, because, uh, you know, as, as you know, as you get close to the Christmas holidays, people start shutting down, you know? And after that first couple of weeks of December, I wouldn't want to depend on somebody coming in and doing a contract job. You know, I want to get it done some, sometime between now and at least the first or second week of December. Because things tend to slow down during that time.
You need to see all that before we can say we've been proven upon, can you hear?
The record's a minute's half to plug while you're doing it, and has to list the costs.
Okay.
The statute says, if any governing authority accepts a bid other than the lowest bid actually submitted, it shall be placed on its minutes detailed calculations and narrative summary, showing that the accepted bid was determined to be the lowest and best bid, including the dollar amount of the accepted bid and the dollar amount of the lowest bid. Though each governing authority shall accept a bid based on items not included in the specifications.
So even if it's under a certain amount, we still have to do that?
Yes, this, the five to seventy-five thousand dollar allows you to accept bids without advertising first. But it still requires you to accept competitive bids, is what it says. So you can't just choose two of them that you like and ignore the other ones. That's not a competitive bid process.
Okay, all right. It's my understanding that I only need to bring two quotes and present those, and articulate why I was choosing one, that's about it.
As halfway right there.
Yeah.
If you get more, then you can't ignore one, so you get it.
That's fair enough, I, that's what we, we, we get along with.
That's all on that.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, boys, I got a couple of things, uh, on the, at the Brad Rafferty, Adams County Leadership Director. On the leadership manager side, uh, I don't know if everybody heard, but Mimi is opening a storm shelter grant for, uh, residents in the county. If you own your own property, uh, you can qualify, uh, to put in your own storm shelter. Uh, up to, the max is, it's going to be seventy-five, twenty-five, uh, with the max up to thirty-five hundred dollars. Uh, the key to that is, is going to be a lottery. Uh, so each county will have at least thirty-eight participants that's going to be chosen. Uh, so we hope, you know, uh, residents of Natchez Adams County, uh, will put in for it. Uh, keep in mind, if you live in the city, they have codes. Uh, so you got to make sure, uh, that your property, uh, whether you do this project, that it follows the codes in the city. In the county, we don't have any codes, uh, but, uh, the project going to have to go through Mimi. Uh, so we need everybody, if you want to apply for an application, to go through Mimi, you can visit the Mimi website, uh, or you can contact my office, and we'll get you in the right spot. Uh, but we do want, uh, people to apply for. There's a lot of money coming through, it's federal government to the state, uh, for people that want a storm shelter on their property. And a lot of people call me saying they rent, if you rent property, you can't do, you got to be an owner, because once they put this, it's permanent. Uh, so now, if the owner want to put someone's property for the test, they can fill out the application for themselves on that. But, uh, like I said, some restrictions on it, there's a deadline. Uh, the project open October third, first is going to close November the third. Uh, so, uh, just make sure, you know, the ones that put the applications in, go ahead and do it, because like I say, it's going to be thirty-eight, shows it, thirty-eight, don't apply here in Adams County, that money going to be put back in the pot, and other counties going to be able to get that, also.
So, what is the amount of money for Adams County?
No, it's, it's-
It's per African?
Per African, so we got thirty-eight, every county got thirty-eight. Now, if, if, just say twenty apply, the rest, that money that's applied for the county law, is going to go back to the pot. So other counties will be able to come back on second and apply.
You're going to get at least thirty-eight?
Yeah, yeah, you're, yeah, thirty-eight, that's our slot, thirty-eight individuals can, where they pull from the lot.
Okay. Since we on TV, could you explain to them actually what they're going to be putting on their property? Because some, some people might not know what a storm shelter is. Could you kind of break it down?
Yeah, of course, yeah, they, they have the specs, and the female outline guys, I can handle all that. It's, it's going to be on the application where you go see everything, so it's going to be specific, like, it could be above ground, in ground, or far skin, halfway ground, but it got to be the female standards of a storm shelter. So you just can't go get a contractor to bid four cell blocks with rebar in it. It got to meet female standards before they even, they don't come out expecting.
So what is it going to be used for?
Like a storm shelter, the ones that can't come to the safe room, like they either move a home, or they got a house, a wooden house, they want, uh, storm shelter on their property, go out back, wherever they want on their property, but it's a place where they go to seek shelter during a tornado or something like that.
That, that's, that's the information I need, right?
Yeah.
Because there's somebody out there listening, and they want the storm shelter, they don't know what a storm shelter is, and then they apply for it, and you put it on their property, and then they're like, well, I ain't know I had to have these people coming over here and all this kind of-
No, 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 it's, it's for the individual, now, you don't, it ain't for the public. So, yeah, let me put it up, it's for the individual landowner. Yeah, because it's not going to be that big, it's, you know, we not talking like, uh, se, well, you can be, what you want to be, and Mimi was going to pay for a certain amount, percentage of it, but it's just for like families. If you got, you know, that one, one, just two people, you only going to build a two-room storm shelter, that's a bitch for two people. You got a large family, if you want to build an eight-by-five home, now, you can't turn into a smoker once it's designated as a storm shelter, now, don't go do that. You know, a smokehouse is not like that, I know, you know.
Sometimes people like, they, the man thing.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, like I say, it got the requirements that it has to be, once, once it meets the requirement, uh, individuals, like I said, you know, there's a minimum that you have to make. If you want to go big, you can go big, but they only go fund up to, what, it costs thirty-five hundred dollars, or seventy-five.
Reimburseable, and they have to pay upfront.
Yeah, you pay upfront, then, then, just like it runs.
She just said something, you got to pay upfront.
Yeah, I'll go get that, but she come, she's like, oh, yeah, come on up there.
Time line you got to put in?
Yeah, it's November, October the third, first, and November the third, yeah. And then once they get that done, then they'll pull from that. And then once they get that done, then they pull from that. So, but like, uh, Ms. West said, uh, you gotta have the money upfront. And once you have the money upfront, you, you, well, you just gonna get approved first. Once you get approved for your, your contract and your design and stuff, you gotta have your money upfront, just like any other grant, you pay for it, then you submit your reimbursement, what they, once the inspections sign off on it. So it's gotta be inspected, and it gotta be a licensed contractor, it does.
Could you, I ain't saying go over everything again, could you say exactly what we gonna do? Cause this, I'm like, this making idiot, he got a lot, he got all these people in the camp, so he need to know this.
Yeah, uh, as we were talking about today, we were talking about, Mema has opened up the storm shelter for residents now, that they can build storm shelters on their property. Uh, the key is you have to own the property, uh, and the period starts from Nov- October the third, first to November the third. Uh, Adams County has thirty-eight slots. So, where it works is, every, you know, more people can apply, but only thirty-eight gonna be picked out of the county. So who are those thirty-eight years, they'll be awarded, uh, move to the next phase to get, uh, start getting those safe storm shelters, uh, on their property. And the way it works is, you pay for it upfront, and then you submit your paperwork to get reimbursed on it, just like any other grant. And, uh, it's seventy-five, twenty-five, okay? And I think the maximum is thirty-five hundred dollars. But like I said, it's only the applications, it's on the Mema website, uh, you, they can call my office and we can try to help them through it if they need to. But it's self-explanatory, I, I can't fill it out for them, each homeowner has to fill their own application out.
I understand, what's it doing, I don't know, what's it ending?
Yeah, October the third, first to November the third. And like I said, I was telling you, if you got individuals in the city, you get to get with the city and make sure your codes, uh, those building codes match up with, uh, where you gonna put it. Also, if you live in a flood zone, do not try to build in the flood zone, we gotta check all that, so, all that's gonna be part of that initial process. When, when you put your plot, when you gonna put it in, we gonna check, make sure you're not in a flood zone, you can't build in the flood zone. So, like I said, it's, it's gonna be three ways you can do it, above ground, all the way in the ground, or sub-suburban, maybe halfway ground, how they want it, it's up to the homeowner. So like I said, we just want people to apply for it, uh, cause if we don't, the money gonna go to other counties.
Is anybody exempt from this?
You pick the rears, if you don't.
Other than that, all homeowners, right?
Yeah, if you own the property, you got a home, uh, you can, you can apply.
The homeowner put one head, I think for the one head.
Well, as a supervisor, Mr. Fisher, I would put my name and hat first, but I'll just bet you, but if you want to, yeah, you can, yeah. It's, it's, like I say, we only got thirty-eight slots, so, after thirty-eight, that's gonna be in our flood counties, don't use all their monies, they'll come back in little second. So, you know, we, we encourage people to, you know, if you can't make good safe rooms, you know, it's a good project, like I said, I don't know how to, this, this money come back around again. So, you know, if people have the money that can do it and wanna do it, we encourage you to do it, so. Any questions on that?
I'm sure there's a thousand, but we'll, we'll deal with them any time.
So you didn't put in for us?
No, I, I'm the safe room, I gotta say this, I was supposed to try to trick you about that. I'll be there anyway, that's okay. Yeah, any questions on that? Like I said, they have, of course, they call my office and we're trying to help them with doing that.
Okay, what's your office, yeah?
Six oh one, four four two, seven zero two one. Yeah, it's above, uh, underground, yeah, yeah. We good on that?
Yes.
Uh, next question I kinda brought up, uh, for the nine-one side of it, I'm pretty sure Scott, Scott knows. Uh, Senate Bill twenty-eight thirty-five did pass, that's the legislature installing the Mississippi, uh, Emergency Communication, uh, Association. Uh, their task is to make sure all our PSAPs, nine-one centers are up to the next, next generation nine-one. Uh, with that being said, all that money that, that was sent in that pot, their job is to make sure that money get put, sent back to the counties. So, starting next year, uh, where it was seventy percent that it was taking, and where seventy percent they was giving us to keep it thirty, we're gonna start getting a hundred percent of that money. So once we start getting a hundred percent of that money, but there's a catch with it. Seventy percent has to go towards the administrative side of nine-one. Thirty percent has to be set aside for next generation, buying equipment, stuff like that. The board supervisors, y'all are the main, uh, interest for the nine-one system. In that bill, it's asking the supervisors to establish that emergency communication, if you had that before, it's called a nine-one board. If y'all wanna go back to a nine-one board, if y'all wanna accept it, take their responsibility, but that money has to be separated. It has to go to its own account, that's the only stipulation to it, it can't go back to the general fund. And we did ask the question, uh, about supervisor, how we do the budgets. We asked the question, like, a lot of supervisors upfront follow the nine-one, and a lot of that money comes back into the general fund, we did ask that. So they're working on that to see how y'all can do that, uh, because I know we, I don't have hundreds upfront. But they're saying the legislature that it has to be in a different, own account. Uh, seventy percent goes, uh, to one account, and the thirty percent has to go to the next generation nine-one. And I think we have to be complete by twenty-third. So every county that receives this money has to be complete with next, next generation nine-one capabilities by twenty-third. Uh, right now, we're probably like, uh, ninety percent of next gen, uh, we only got a couple more things to do, uh, to be a hundred percent compliance. So hopefully, when we get the new nine-one center and we start getting those funds coming in, we can start getting, uh, to our next generation, that, that's what's mapping and that's what techs nine-one.
And then you need something else to do, yeah? Um, so what are they gonna do with the ninety billion dollars that's in that account?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's coming to the counties, but when it comes to the counties, that's why I say it can't go to the general fund, it has to go into the ninth, it has to.
I understand, I just, you know, we've been talking about that money for five years. Finally, I mean, I guess I embarrassed the governor when I asked him that question five years ago. And I threw in there sixty million dollars in there and he, he got somebody else to call me back, tell me that it was seventy. So the billion, this, and that's up to ninety billion, but at least, at least they're doing something about it instead of that money just sitting there.
Right.
For, it's been sitting there for almost thirty years, it took thirty years to get to that amount.
Right.
Don't get to that.
You don't think we should get excited about the money?
When we get it?
Oh, oh, okay, I see, you just like Christmas, right? Do you open again? It's just a box.
So, like I said, so it's next phase, so it's, we got time, uh, so it's up to the board, how y'all wanna do it, y'all wanna do another nine-one board, or y'all just wanna take it and have this, put their separate account and manage it that way? Yeah, that'd be, we just have to, when we, when we start next year, like I said, just give you a heads sign where we got to do it, we, I'll give it to you on that, according to the, uh, the, the, the bill itself, what it says on that, so.
Thank you, Chris, yeah.
That's it, appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris.
I'll be talking about Ms. West.
Good morning, South West Mrs. Beplin Development District. Um, under the, our plan was the Adams County Home Improvement Project, we had three that was complete, um, but I need approval for the final cost certification pages for each applicant. Um, it was Presgro, Burns, and Washington, if I'm not mistaken, right page?
Um, I did Presgro last meeting, except if you wanna do those other two.
Okay, Burns and Washington, they, um, everything's completely paid out, um, I just need approval for the final cost certifications on those applicants, that's all.
Any votes for that? New board of directors? Second by hundred and fifty? Any discussion? All in favor? Most, any names, most of yours?
Is it Willie Washington?
Joe. Joe, Joseph, Joseph Washington?
Oh, no, I was gonna, cause I got a call from Willie Washington, he had called me on the weekend, I mean, Friday or something, that was on eighty-four, number one or something like that?
No. Joe Washington is on highway six one.
Highway six one? Get on highway six one, eighty-four.
This is, uh.
Well, Willie, Willie, Willie's our company.
There's some issues?
Uh.
It's an issue?
No, we, we, we'll talk.
Okay, I mean, let me know so I can contact the contractor, that's why I was asking.
No, he's, uh, I think it was Willie Washington and, um, uh, one of them, I know his price was, uh, was high, something like that.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
I ended up getting sick, so I hadn't been, you know, in contact, so he called me and asked me about it, I didn't really know, but you know, I hadn't been.
Right, but you remember we, Wilson was talking.
We'll talk.
Um. Next, I just wanted to mention that, um, Mr. Preston Wilson, your last homeowner, um, for the tree removal.
Right.
Um, I spoke with Mr. Parker, Ryan Parker, Allied Tree Company, and they waiting on the ground to dry before they.
Actually, he's finished that project, I just sent you a text or, or, or email.
He must did it over the weekend, huh?
Yes. He said he's finished with it, I, I just sent you a email.
Okay, well, thank you, once, um, once I get the inspector out to take pictures and everything, we'll close out that one. So, that will leave a balance under this project of two thousand four hundred seventy-nine dollars, which will be reimbursed back to Adams County Board Supervisors. So Southwest Phantom will run a check back to the board.
How much is left in, who's got it?
You wanna hear each super? Okay, so.
Oh, she said, let me say this, uh. Do that have a warranty on it because the young lady I was telling you about at one seventy-two, Morgantown Road?
I did contact the contractor this morning.
So do they just go back and take care of it?
Yes.
So they don't need none of these funds or nothing?
No, 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 okay, he's gone, he's gone chicken, I talked to him this morning before I came. Okay, so balances, Milton, I'm sorry if you don't mind if I just call the last name?
That's fine.
Milton, six eighty-one, six hundred eighty-one dollars, Wilson, nine hundred ninety-eight dollars, Gaines, three hundred dollars, Hutchins, three hundred dollars, and Gray, two hundred dollars. For a total of two thousand four hundred seventy-nine dollars. So that's the amount that, um, the check would be cut back to Adams County for.
Um, got a question, doesn't know how to.
Go ahead, uh.
Okay, I didn't mean to say tree removal, is that part of that money, that money, contract money, as opposed to for the pay, is it, do you do some of the tree removal also?
That is allowed if the, um, tree is in danger of, in, as a hazard for the homeowner.
Okay, so you can't do, you can't do that?
Yes, ma'am.
If it's, if it was dangerous enough or created an inhabability of the, of the property, was the way that program was found, John?
Okay, I just, I just needed to know, cause I didn't want us to get off track with that, so, um, I, I just wanted to know, didn't want it to be illegal or anything like that.
I thought, I thought that issue was approved already.
No, I don't think they approved it, but we can approve it, it needs to approve it.
I don't think we.
So you would approve when you application.
It's a part of the project, it is a part of the project, I don't think I did approve.
Yes, ma'am, when we approved that scope of work, that's when you would have approved the pine village habity and all that?
That's all I have.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
News of the night, uh, Smith, oh, you knew, uh, is it any kind of, uh, grants out there where we can, uh, look at, uh, stuff in this looking tool?
To do what, to turn it to?
Oh, great, make it out of mandatory, just to open approval.
I'll look into it.
Looking to it, thank you, ma'am.
You are.
Morning, welcome. First thing I have, uh, election polls, we, uh, started out this morning, can get started, and had a few models, but, uh, they are, um, getting out, getting the boxes and getting them put out this morning. So if you have any calls or anything, just let us know, but they are working on, uh, every speech. Uh, second thing I have, a small curtain quest, President Wilson should be before you, two eleven Greenfield Road, Leroy Sessions. Cross that with the fire grant. Yes. So, you would buy Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Milton, any discussion? All in favor? Any names, most of yours? Uh. Next thing I have, uh, should be before you, to Mr. Wilson, uh, President Wilson, is, um, dead oak tree, across from forty-two Sainsville Road. Um, pictures, and I did have prices, I contacted, or made contacted three tree cutters, didn't get the one bid again this time. Uh, we contacted two new tree cutters, just go around and said they were interested in trees, and she emailed all three of them, we didn't get the one bid back Thursday afternoon, from Arborwood for thirty-two hundred dollars.
Did you put, uh?
Yes.
Bird on it?
Bird and every one, both, both of them are deep ones, and, uh, they do work for the city, so we contacted them, got their email address and emailed them.
Oh.
Work for the city?
No, they do work for the city, so they are licensed, you know? So, yeah, so we contacted, uh, emailed those and that was all the bid we got back.
No, I got most of, uh, Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Milton, any discussion? All in favor? Any names, most of yours?
Um, I have a six-month employee, uh, his probation period's up, uh, Philip Wimery, you should have that, uh, before you. He's wanted thirty-five thousand, uh, six dollars and forty cents.
Okay, hour rate sixteen eighty-three, a little new by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Milton, any discussion? All in favor? Any names, most of yours?
Next thing I have, had the contractor Morgantown Road contact me week before last, um, I had talked to Mr. Ford about this, uh. It's some materials that was left over Morgantown Road project, uh. Mr. Ford talked to the contractor, the material had been paid for, uh, for the job, and the contractor won't know where it needs to be delivered. Uh, notes is on effort between the county and the city, and just hunt some directions of what to do, what to do with it.
They ordered too much material, uh?
So, you know, they ordered material to install the pipes and endless, after the intersection was laid.
Had to make another trees.
If I don't make another tree, that material had been on its own site and paid.
So what is material, you talking about?
You talking about pipes and surveillance, talking about pipes and endless.
Any, any chance any of that could be used on the next phase?
Uh.
Or the special two, but we were done.
Yeah, so that pipe is round, we put an arch pipe on the first phase.
I don't know if it needs to be a conversation.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it needs to be a conversation with the city.
That's what I say to, to nobody go with.
It can't be returned.
I don't think it can be returned, it exists paid for.
Can we use it for anywhere?
I really don't know what all this in there, I know it's some pipes and some endless, like you said, but I don't know what size or what's what, and I don't know how much of what they, you know, what I'm saying, this concrete pipe, isn't it, Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Yes, so, I, I don't know, I mean, that's what I think, we just need to have a discussion with the city and see if we want, get it delivered and brought in, and look at what, you know, what inventory is, and then. Try to make a decision what we do with it, or, you know, us or the city.
Are they the day show, your, one of your yard? That's all y'all need to figure out?
I was just bringing for the board, I don't know, you know, what to do, but.
Now, do you have any thoughts about that?
Preferably you find it useful on the project, but we'll have a conversation with the city.
Okay.
Uh, let me say this, uh. How much dragon file did we get?
About five, I haven't been just.
Yeah. Let me see how I can put this. We got, everybody need to know what happened to the young lady in the brown, she been in the pipe, open pipe. And my question is, uh. We got a lot of open pipe in the county, I mean, big open pipe in the county where kids can get in these pipes. Now, this situation that opened up a cane of worms, where me personally think we need to find a way to put some over these pipes where the water can get in it. And not individual, uh, kid, cause it gonna be. to put some over these pipes where the water can get in it and not individual, uh, kid, because it gonna be, it gonna come out. I'm telling you.
Well, in that situation, she was pinned by the force of the water. She didn't, I don't think she actually went in the water. It's a part of her.
She went in it and it came out eighteen on the other end.
No, how big a pipe was that?
I'm not sure, just, uh, just looking at the box from me, and I ain't measured it, but I would say it's roughly eighteen, twenty-four inch pipe. I, I just.
Let me say this. Even when I was with the city for sixteen years, I, I had a problem with all these open pipes. Because when, especially when you're going down properties, it wasn't so big. It looked like you can drive a car through it, and, and it's not safe. Especially when people got these kids. And one thing I know about water, when water start going down here, ain't nothing you can do to stop it. So, as one supervisor, I just think we need to try to find a way if we can put some over these, over these pipes, especially these real big pipes.
I've seen, um, places where Mississippi tried to do that, that's set in the road department or the, um, DOT. And what it ends up doing is putting a log starts coming through there, it stops, and then it stops everything else. And then it opens up, and it blows out the road. It blows the road out.
A log?
A log, those tree limbs, anything gathers up, any, any break that you're talking about putting up, it'll blow the road out.
Where I'm at for build a road out, there's somebody to be.
Somebody gets caught up against it. They're, they're done too, because they can't get away from it because of the suction and, and the hydrostatic. It is kind of a double-edged sword.
I'm mainly talking about in these neighborhoods where people can go outside and get in these drain. I, I'm, I'm, all from these neighborhoods, that's something different. But inside these neighborhoods, I'm telling you, we need to be really, really careful. Thank you.
Go ahead.
So, Scott, we gonna try to set up or just off to the city or something? Okay, thank you. Um, next thing I have, on December eighteenth, road department work off on the eighteenth to come back on January fifth.
President's schedule?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's all I have. A short question.
Oh, you got a tire grant or just a whole?
Might be you, and I don't have, I don't have unless she sent it to Corbett. Corbett sent it over. Sometimes she'll do that.
We're gonna look this, this. Oh.
But I'll ask her.
This October twenty-second, um, um, state road construction, bridge closure, quitting the road.
We got it open. We redone it three. They sent it to us last. Week before last on Thursday, and we done it Monday.
Anything you need to do with it?
No, we took this back up. We took pictures and sent them to the state already.
Okay.
Okay. How, how much was that tire grant for?
Two thousand five hundred thirty dollars.
I'll ask her to see, uh, what it is. I'll have her connect to me.
I think there's a third check.
That's all I have. Thank you, Al.
Uh, good morning, Moore. Uh, on dates, uh, New York Tire Road Phase Two, uh, the bid opening for that project will be November the seventeenth, uh, twenty twenty-five. Uh, we currently have one, one contractor who's interested in being on that project, and that is APAC.
Um, say, say it again?
Yeah, one contractor, one contractor is interested in being on that project, and that's APAC. Uh, we will send out mass email to some of the payers contractors who may be interested in being on the project.
Which, which project is that?
That's Phase Two Morgantown Road.
Okay, I'll eat that. I'll wonder.
For Phase One Morgantown.
What do you say, what, November seventeenth?
November the seventeenth. That'll be the next board meeting. Carfis Point, the bid opening for that project will be, uh, December first. That's the first board meeting in December. All right. Um, next I have C zero four five contractors complete with the, with both Ohio Highway April four sites, as well as the Kingston Road sites. Um, they're gonna put some additional rip rap on Dunbar Bayou, and they're doing clearing and rubbing on Churchill Road. And once they complete that site, they'll be moving over to Quicken Road. Um, the contractor did submit a, uh, pay request for the month of October in the amount of five hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars and seven and four cents.
All right, regret. Move by Mr. Gaines. By Mr. Milton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Most carries?
Uh, we also requesting, um, engineer fees in the amount of six, six thousand, sixteen dollars and forty-one cents for the same project.
Move by Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Milton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Most carries?
And now, the next thing we're asking for is request for authorization to allow the board president to sign the reimbursement request for the same project in the amount of five hundred ninety-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
Move by Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Milton. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right. Um, next we have, we request an authorization of our board president to sign the, the annual financial reports for project C zero four five, C zero seven nine, um, to allow for us to submit those reimbursement requests.
Which project is it?
Yeah.
Another thing they want, some more.
Check.
Move by Mr. Gaines, second by. Sir, which is the project?
So, C zero four five is Ohio Highway April four sites with Kingston Road and Dunbar.
Yes.
And the other one is to want equipment in Kingston Road.
Okay. Just wanna make sure we're doing together.
Yes. I'm just asking for the bid assignment.
Yeah, yeah.
Both of them will be zero dollar, because we haven't actually spent money for the, for that payment rules up, so.
All in favor? Uh, uh, any names? Carry.
And the last thing I have is all EWP projects, uh, thirteen Johnson Circles, Jerusalem Church, Care Row, and Upper Kingston. Uh, the designs have been completed, so we're preparing. We've submitted the, uh, passing legal description for Johnson Circle and Upper Kingston. This week we'll be submitting the passing legal description for Johnson, for Jerusalem Church, and both Care Row site this week.
And I got the title work on two that you've submitted to me. So, we're about to send out the quest. We're trying to track them down, assign them that ways. On the Johnson Circle and what's the other?
Upper Kingston.
Yeah, Upper Kingston. And there's how many more?
There'll be, there's two more, uh, Jerusalem Church and Care Row, uh, two sites on here.
So, need permission to do the legal work on those? Does that, does that include it on your previous?
I think.
Okay, never mind.
Okay.
And we're gonna have these ready to go, so when the, we need to put them out for bid, when the, you know, shutdown's off or whatever, we'll be ready to go.
So, approximately, uh, how long would you be able to do the legal work on Care Row and Jerusalem Church?
Someone get the passing legal.
Yes.
It'll be submitted.
It'll be submitted. Then it's got to you to start.
Yeah, legal work doesn't take very long, but tracking them down to get them to sign right away, that you.
That's why.
That experience could be a problem.
Do them, help it out, see if they can track down.
Yes, sir. And just educating them as to what we're doing on the project.
Any, any other one for that?
No. No, he, he said we do it at.
Um, that's all the things I have. Any questions for?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, Burke Road, York Road. I know we talked about it last time. It's shutting down for a game.
Yeah.
Um, I, I just wanna make sure that on our end, your end, we had everything in place. Uh, in, in a perfect world, I would love for these to be at the same time. They should be. You know, I think it makes a more feeling for the contractor. Uh, I did reach out to, uh, residents of York Road the other day. Sheriff mentioned there were some questions about it, and there is a problem when there's a tree down because it could limit their access in that. Um, you know, there weren't no right of ways. I mean, no, I don't think there's any right of ways on York, right?
York Road.
Burke Road.
Burke Road would do. And same thing with York, because it's in the same wildlife fisheries.
But I don't think we need a right of ways on it.
US Wildlife Fisheries don't have that property.
They don't have that property.
I don't want to.
On your road or your road?
On your road.
I don't think we're working with any existing right of way.
Right, correct.
Need addition.
Correct. I don't think we have any addition.
I, I'll verify.
Sure. I was told.
When you, when you put a box in, you get more right of way. And so, we will.
Here's the thing. I want them on the same schedule for the bid.
Yeah, so what we did was, because of the new requirements that were required on Burke Road, we did the same thing on York Road. So.
So, let me ask you a question, so, but I understand what you're saying, and I agree with what you're saying. Just say, you gotta get some from wildlife and fishery. It takes so long for us to get. You gonna hold up your other projects?
Like five years.
You gonna hold up your other project?
No.
You say you want them on the same.
No, no, I said, I want to have everything in place, so when they come back to work, when you just sign off on the same time.
Okay, I can make sure I'm hearing you right.
So, in perfect world, I want to bid at the same time.
So, so with your on the first order too, you're a funner sort of. So, with York Road, you have ERVR, so that's, once we get the plans ready, we get all the right of way, then we can advertise that project. Doesn't have to go and get money released from the county or M dot on that project, because it's an ERVR project. So, the issue with the Burke Road is that money has been held up until the right of way approves, the M dot approves their right of way certification, and then that money is released.
Why is it different for me?
Because you have ERCR, you have LPA, those are two separate.
Oh, same grant?
Well, we, we had, you know, we had that, but then there was no money in ERVR that we didn't have to do the LPA.
And just because it's the same grant, M dot, they put it in this program as opposed to that program, which why you ask them to just give us the money directly, so we don't have the bureaucracy on it?
Just verify, will you verify that right of way issue with York?
With York?
With York.
Burke definitely is.
No, no, I'm definitely York. Okay.
Have you met with that new, uh, guy down there for, uh, the same guy who's pretty wild, I reckon? Have you met him yet?
No, I haven't met with him. I know that the new surveyor guy, the new surveyor individually, he's been coordinating with my surveyor, so, since they know, they speak the same language with them coordinating.
I, I imagine. So, I just wanted to hear, you know, when they get back to work, Scott was really at home for him. She was great.
What do you think?
Rachel asked me to tell you between my surveyor and their surveyor, everything was good, and then the guy said, yeah, it'll take all three weeks, and then they go over and shut down. Took, took place.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question?
Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
You want to go ahead, take your, your?
Good morning. I believe somewhere in your packet, maybe in your doctor, wherever you have pay estimate number thirteen for Bellwood Levy Project. Uh, this pay estimate's in the amount of twenty-one thousand, seven hundred fifty-five dollars and sixty-five cents. We recommend payment of that to the contractor.
Okay, you heard the request?
Certainly.
Second by Mr. Milton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Most carries?
And then we had a permit. Did you wanna ask for that permit?
Yeah, so the Corps of Engineers is part of this project. You have to have a, uh, four oh eight permit. Um, there's been some question as to whether the court commission would sign that permit or the county would. Um, so.
I talked to Anthony, and he said that the county could sign this one, since it's the county's under contract. The court has to deal with them when they're dealing a little bit of work here or there, maintenance work. They'll deal with the Corps of Engineers, but since this was a, basically a creation of a new levy system, and the contract was with the county, then he said that the county should be the one that signs for it.
Some more. Second. Move by Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Milton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Most carries?
Just another day on Bellwood. We, we issued, uh, basically all the work is complete there. We've issued a substantial completion on that on October fourteenth, but we have punched this items that need to be corrected before we'll do the final pay estimate, and the contractor's working through those. Now, we had that five, five and a half inches of rain or whatever we had here, we could sort of go, it's caused a lot of erosion. We'll have to get back in and repair that. And repair the road.
Is that? That the erosion is, isn't like that?
It is for lower soil when you get six inches of rain on it, yeah.
With that, with that growth.
Right. He has just planted that grass, and, and so, kind of unfortunate events, but that's what happens.
So, when the grass grows, that'll kind of curtail that?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Everything that was up and rolling before, we didn't have issue with. This was all reed, only infissions, so.
That's why Addison sort of knew the field, where they were talking about new contractor mention, he would like to put rip rap to fix it. You said it did need rip rap. I mean, all that's holding up. I know it's from erosion ended here a while back. And I know after this big rain, it should have been some more, but that was on the punch list to correct.
Yes.
And, and the road, I know you said.
Yeah.
Anything else? No.
Thank you.
Free to go. For now.
We'll have to file. Somebody didn't mean that.
Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll schedule with the county, so whoever wants to be there for the final walkthrough can, can be present.
Good morning, Moore. I have two items for you. Uh, track report, District One's got thirty-one bags, District Two, one hundred and twenty-two, District Three, forty-three, District Four, forty-one, District Five, eighty, for a total of one hundred and eighty-two bags. Uh, we are down to two inmates from the four that we were getting from Wilkinson County, so we're trying to get back up to four, but I don't know if that's gonna end up happening.
Okay.
Uh, the only other item I have for you is a letter of resignation from, uh, George Wells, uh, as of last Friday.
Move by Mr. Milton to accept the letter, uh, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor?
Everything else we had.
Anything? Most carries?
Anything else we had? I think the county minister could take care of it. Any questions?
No, that one.
Yes, sir.
You already know.
What?
Oh, because I did. You take it yet? Track, what do you think I do there?
Wrong.
Yeah. I, I got a, I got a little check, uh, since I've been sitting here. I got, I think I called you and I missed you the weekend last week. It's been about two weeks. I know I started keeping on two weeks here, and, because you got some stuff there. When I get the text, it's been two weeks, and it happened, so, you know.
Well, I'm right through it. There's no problem. Yes, sir.
In, in that front side of Morgantown too, because I, both them right, just on the main road right there, in the front, I think it's Brooklyn.
Okay, fair enough. Okay.
Right, right there. Yeah, there's a hint of, your house is there.
I did read with just a chain, uh.
Yes, sir.
I did read in the newspaper where some victim died from a shooting out in Cambridge Heights. They had a little to them, they died. I read that somewhere. My, my concern is this, uh, I'm not gonna say we, but they been battling, trying to get cameras out there. Have we had any success in getting cameras out there?
Uh, I think Commander Best is the liaison for the, the PD. Um, I know Sheriff has been talking to Cambridge Heights. Uh, it just, I, I don't know what, what the holdup is on, on their end, you know, because they've got to provide the internet. I know there's been conversations. That was conversation years ago whenever we put all the cameras in. Uh, and even in the heights, all the cameras that they paid all that money for, maybe, I don't even wanna say number, very few of them are still working.
Yes, they have Noah cameras. They put their own cameras there where.
And we were approached with them as well about putting Noah cameras up. Uh, we're definitely trying, and I know the sheriff's trying to work some, some back doors, but as of right now, there's no set installation dates for anything in there. But as of right now, there's no set installation dates or anything in that.
I just don't understand at, at the end of shootings that, that we are having out there. Why is this not at the top of the list? I mean, we put in cameras places where ain't nothing going on, but where the shooting and killing going on. We got a problem getting cameras there. I understand that it's private owned. I do understand that. But at some point, those people that own that place need to be held accountable. Because people are dying out there and people are living in fear out there.
I, I agree with you, Superintendent.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Oh, uh, Rob, could you get in touch with the engineer and let him know because I'm still being called by the, the big truck over there?
I'll talk to him this morning.
What'd he say?
About getting a weight limit signed or getting a weight limit where we could have signed up if they can, you know.
How long it gonna take? How long it's gonna take?
He said he's gonna look at it and see. I, I talked to him this morning before the meeting, uh, on that. And I've got a bridge and, um, Garden City, he's got to give me the posting on here because they say lot of trucks is crossing there. So I'm waiting on the posting for both of those.
Is that all, yeah?
Yes, sir.
All right. Appreciate the call. Any public comments? Public comments? Roundtable, Mr. Gray.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I just, uh, just want to congratulate Alcorn State University for receiving a forty-two million dollar gift from Mackenzie Scott. Forty-two million. Wow, that much. Uh, I see where the governor. Natchez Area College received a, a award from, uh, from the governor of the state of Mississippi. Um, I, I understand we, we are in the county and we're gonna have some open ditches and open pipes or whatever the case may be. But it's not gonna come to the fro, vote for it till somebody died. Somebody done died. And especially those high pipes, I think we need to try to find a way, if we can, especially those ones that are real, real big, to try to put something open to keep these kids or whatever from going up in it. Uh, I did attend. Bridge renaming for former supervisor, uh, Supervisor Boyce Sojourn. I think they're gonna do one for Supervisors, uh, James Carter out in Houston. Um, raining a little bit. My hair got wet. And, uh, it, it was a very, very interesting, uh, uh, celebration out there. I go way back with the Sojourners and, uh, I, I really enjoyed myself. Uh, next. Um. I just ain't never seen that much rain fall that fast. And I was at a wedding at the convention center and walked over to the community center, had an event. One of my friends got inducted to the Colleen Hall of Fame. It was a nice event. The next morning, we came back to clean up and the whole convention center was flooded with water. So I know we had, uh, some rain and fog. Uh. Ma'am?
Our office. We have been in it in a week. Sure.
Yeah, it was a lot of water. Uh, I'm gonna let Mr. Gaines deal with Cleota Heights. Somebody called me, but that's his area. I guess he'll deal with that.
Was that then the guy in there?
Yes, sir.
October, the guy in there.
Yes, sir. It was a nice event. Uh, and I'm gonna say this again, uh, me personally, I haven't seen the action, uh, because I don't visit churches like I used to. And I don't know what the churches are doing to help out with the govern, government shutdown. Uh, but something need to be done and it need to be done as a community because, uh, the Stu Pott already asking for whatever they can get. So now if all these people ain't got, ain't receiving, uh, money to buy groceries, they ain't gonna have no other choice but to go to the Stu Pott and everywhere else to try to get something to eat for their families. This is a, a terrible situation. And our idea is being the governor, I ain't never seen it this bad. Uh, but I guess in the long run, some are good, some good will come from all this. Uh, I want to say this. It's just my opinion and, uh, I just never seen what's going on on the federal level trickle down to the local level like it's doing right now. And, uh, I think this board, these five board members need to have, matter of fact, I'm calling for, uh, uh, I got somebody to discuss in, uh, executive session and see do it qualified because, uh, I'm just not happy with what's going on. And it's, it need to be handled. If it don't get handled, it's gonna get out of control, where it's already out of control. And, uh, I'm just gonna try to handle it behind closed doors. If I can't, then we just gonna have to come out of the window, hang it outside, out in the public. Uh, last. My sympathy goes out to Lassie Brown. I think that's, uh, Ray Brown's mother. He, she, he used to be a deputy with, uh, Adams County, him and his brother. The Jackson family, the Hawke family, the Robinson family, the Brown family. And, uh, young lady that got drowned, the Terrell Dixon family, the Sala family, the Robinson family, the Gordon family, McGee, the Summer, and the Johnson family. And special, uh, thing goes out to a good friend of mine. She played basketball with South Pike. She alleges in the state of Mississippi. Her name is Janice Felder. Uh, I know she won a couple championships with South Pike. We never could beat him back in the days. And, uh, Ms. Janice Felder passed and, uh, she was a USM superstar at USM. And, uh, my sympathy goes out to her and her family. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Ms. Hutchins.
Yeah.
Yeah, move.
Okay, the only thing I do, the only thing I have, I think Scott is gonna probably bring it up too, is that, um, Miss talked to one forty-six, uh, Palestine Road.
Yes, ma'am. Do you want to bring it up now? It'd be okay.
Yeah, we can go ahead and bring it up now. Um, I did, uh, have someone go out and check to see if there was cuts. I'm out of town, but, um, it is not cut and we do have to sue Robbie. Are you still there?
Yes, we got pictures. President Wilson has them before him.
Why don't you do a motion to open the board up to a public hearing?
Certainly.
Okay, I make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Middleton, second by Mr. Gaines. All in favor?
Okay, now, we stand in a public hearing about one forty-six North Palestine Road, one forty-six North Palestine Road, one forty-six North Palestine Road. Anyone here? Supervisor Hutchins, did you want to proceed with your, your report on one forty-six North Palestine Road?
I do. Um, as I was saying, I, uh, had a lot to go out and take pictures this morning. And regards to it, uh, he did check on it yesterday also. Um, it was not cut, but I guess we was trying to get a chance, uh, yesterday to cut it. But it also shows this one that it was not cut and he did provide his report. So, um, next thing is to, is to, we go ahead and proceed with cutting and, uh, put it on the, uh, the legal property, on their pocket taxes?
Uh, yes, ma'am. So the next step, if it was adjudicated, menace, which I actually drove out there myself maybe two or three weeks ago. And I, I didn't know if you just wanted the, the property cut or if the building itself was dilapidated. Um, but if it's just to get it cut, then we, we need to allow them a reasonable period of time to get it cut. And then after that period of time is run, the road group would go and cut it and then we would bill it back to them at the next meeting. So I would say have Robbie, you know, make a report at the next meeting. If it's not cut again, then we would, you know, go ahead with the cut and, and bill it back to them.
Okay. Or Scott, I did also get a problem about the, um, the building that is dilapidated. So what, what should we do about that? Because I don't know if we could re- remove that building from there or what?
Look at that, some pictures, you'll all see. Yeah, and this actually allows you to remove dilapidated buildings. It looks pretty bad. And y'all have to understand, this isn't like out in the middle of the country. You know, there's a bunch of little, almost like a little subdivision right there.
Right, right. Um, so we may cut you off. This neighborhood's all around it. When that lady first purchased that property, she contacted me and Ms. Hutchins about that mobile home that's on that property. We're trying to get rid of it or, you know, have it removed or whatever. I told the county couldn't help but remove it or anything like that. So it's been sitting there and, uh, you know, they, we've had complaints and I think Corvettes had complaints here. That's how it just really got started. So, uh, yes, it, it's in pretty bad shape. The whole home doesn't have any windows though, you know, so it needs something done to get, so I don't know.
Yes, and I would like to have it removed.
Yeah, again, you get a reasonable period of time for them to cure that problem. And then after that time has lapsed, the county can do it at their expense. And so obviously cutting the grass is a little bit easier to do than moving a trailer. I'm not fully sure because I'm not in the trailer moving business, but, but, uh, you get a time period for both if it's the board's prerogative.
Okay, what, what time period can we get it stopped? Do we get it two weeks or do we give them a month or what?
For cutting the grass, I would say you could cut the grass within two weeks. To move the trailer home, I'm not sure what it, how long it takes to move a, a home or.
I don't know. I don't know if it's got any axle, got any tires under or whatever. I, I don't know. Like I said, it'd be some. Yeah, it'd be some legal work to it.
Yeah, they would have notification, everything.
It's a sign in the yard right there in front of them.
Okay, I like to proceed with. Just okay.
Two weeks to cut the grass? And what?
Just have, if they have to cut the grass out there and look at it and see how long it would take to get it removed.
Okay, the grass, we gonna wait until next four weeks and see.
And you can then report out the building?
And report about, and I'll report about both of them. I'll walk up, look at it, see if it's got any axle under or whatever. Probably just need to be demolished, but I'll look for the homeowner to, or the land owner.
Yeah, that's, that's a lot of work.
To make that decision. I'll take that responsibility.
I don't know if you, if you got axle, you might throw it to the firehouse and let them, uh, push off and hold. All right, um. We need a motion for that. She already made the motion?
I made the motion.
Okay, move. Need a second? Second by Mr. Middleton. Oh, uh, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names? Motion carries. Do you have anything else in the session?
No. Do we need a motion, call that here?
Yes, ma'am.
I make that motion, call that here.
Second by Mr. Middleton. All in favor? All right, we're back in regular session.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Gaines?
Oh, we're just kind of talking about that five inches of rain. I thought when, uh, when we were first elected, I think, um, that night we got sworn in. I thought we had it raining, that problem later blew out. And I think that's something that all of us won't forget that night. And wet snow was out and, uh, but we actually had, actually an inch and a half more than that. And so, you know, when you have that kind of rain out, whatever drainage system, you got it flooded. New Orleans with big drainage system, that much rain in a three hour period is very, very dangerous. So, you know, I don't know, it wasn't making it rain like that, but we had a lot of washouts and it is very dangerous when it's out, uh, when you have stuff like that. So, you know, um, I asked some of my constituents that, you know, still, we working, the road department is working, so, um, we're coming. I can say that because, you know, I got two hundred and five miles, road mile, and only nine tenths of mile are inside the city limits. All mine are in the country area. We had driveways washed out, pipes stocked up. We have a lot and the road department has been working, uh, really diligently to, uh, get that solved. And, uh, so I just say to my constituents, you know, we, we come, have a long list, but they're working every day. And it's making, uh, very good progress. And I, you know, thank the road department for what they're doing. And, uh, second of all, you know, I was proud of it, here to airport announcement. That's one of those things, you come back at, uh, twenty-one when I first started. One of the things we campaigned about, that I campaigned, I want to see it open. And of course, it is in my district. And, you know, it took a lot of teamwork. It's not one person effort. It's a very, a joint effort. But that joint effort will actually be a game changer for average county period, I think. It will help, uh, you know, a lot of people travel out. We got a lot of people work, uh, out of jobs and stuff like that. They had to drive to New Orleans, Baton Rouge, Jackson to fly out to go to work. You know, I know there'll be a lot of that they can drive. You can drive one side to the other in the next thirty minutes. So, you know, you can drive to your airport and fly out. So, you know, and everybody involved. I won't get to call it night. You know, I appreciate everybody involved and, uh, because it took a lot of collaboration. I think it's since what, about twenty-one? Uh, so it took about four hard years of continuous, uh, working on things and it happened. So, you know, that, that's, that's a very great thing. So I, I'm really proud and hope everything can continue to move forward. I think it'll be a step in the right direction for, uh, economic growth. You know, investors can actually fly in and see some of our projects. Last week, we had people flew in at Jackson, people flew in to New Orleans. And everybody was trying to be on schedule to get in. I think it's a game changer to have folks come in, uh, to do that. So, you know, I'm really proud of it and I hope we can continue to work and move, uh, and move forward with it. And, uh, tomorrow is election day. It's a special election. And I do have, uh, some, uh, my boxes that'll be in the northern district. So I will be up early in the morning making sure I have precincts open. And, you know, I was always just secure nearby no matter if it's a big election or a small election. Go vote. It's very important to go vote. You know, that's a, I would say that. And so hopefully we can, uh, get through that. And I give the floor, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Mr. Middleton?
Yeah, I just want to talk about the airline announcement as well. Um, you know, as Supervisor Gaines stated, this was a long process. It started four years ago. Actually started when Supervisor Hutchins was sitting in, in the president's seat. Uh, you know, the hardest thing about this job for me coming out of the private sector is how long it takes stuff to come to fruition. Uh, but we, we, we held the course. Um, it was a, it was a joint effort with the city, uh, the county, Natchez Inc., and, and also it would not have happened without help from MDA and from the state. Uh, for the future of Natchez and Adams County, it's, it's tremendous. Uh, having the ability for people to land here and not have to fight to get here and hit rental car and drive two hours like, like Supervisor Gaines said, is just so important for our residents who, who travel for work. Uh, I've had a few people text me who travel, traveled Houston weekly. Um, and, and it's just so big for their family. You know, I know there's a lady I talked to who has to drive her son to, or her husband, uh, me and Brandy had this talk. Uh, has to drive her husband, I think, every other week to, to the airport before she has to be at work at seven o'clock in the morning. Um, it's, it's, it's a game changer. Uh, the numbers are there. Uh, I hope in two years, the da, the daily flights are two to three a day. And I think they'll get there. Um, but it's huge. I've said it for years, how valuable that airport is. And for us to finally, uh, see the, the, the use of it come to fruition is just great. Uh, I want to thank our airport commission. Our, our county administrator has been involved in this for a long time when she was a board member of, uh, on the airport board. But now it's. Our air, our county administrator, who's been involved in this for a long time, when she was a boardman, uh, uh, on the airport board, but now as as county administrator. She's been very involved in this, so it's a win for everybody, it's not just Natchez and Adams County, but for the entire region. Um. Robbie, I forgot to ask you, Robin's like.
We gonna pay the.
Okay, I know that was the original thing, but now I just figured.
Yeah, we gotta pay.
Yeah. Um. I believe that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Middleton. Ms. Dean.
I don't have anything yet.
All right, Ms. Bush.
I just have two items, uh, I need to have the Natchez bonds spread across the minutes, we just have one, and that is Catherine Broadway.
You heard request. Moved by Mr. Middleton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mr. Gray. Any discussion, all in favor? Any names, motion carries?
I just have another item, um, I need to have the October meal report for my next please.
Heard request. Moved by Mr. Middleton. Second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion, all in favor? Any names, motion carries?
Let's all have, thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all cover me in there.
All right.
Um, I have a um, loan transfers to clear negative cash balances in some of the funds, uh, the biggest being uh, the uh, EWP's. We haven't gotten reimbursed yet, but we will be getting reimbursed, so um, that was five hundred and ten thousand dollars of the last ninety that. Are are negative balances, and then um, I'm making a transfer from Countywide Roads to the EMSOL fund. Um, we had an audit done, and we were missing our twenty twenty-two payment, so Chikey and I searched and we dug, and it got decoded to the brown department in twenty twenty-two. So we're just putting it in the right department for twenty twenty-three, and now our balance matches, you know, the SOF, which I think is emergency management. Something, something.
Well, yeah, but.
That's a big acronym.
Emergency medical.
Medical.
Special operating.
At home.
There you go, okay. You heard a request. Moved by Mr. Middleton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names, motion carries?
Um, this is just an absentee request, I forgot to make the last meeting, because I didn't realize my husband had a doctor's appointment at a table, and he reminded me the day before. So I was out October this twenty-second to take him for outpatient procedure.
Moved by Mr. Middleton. Do what?
No.
Okay, um.
Yes, you can.
Rachel.
Okay.
I'm I'm sure you were working the whole time, though.
Yeah.
Actually, I was. Okay, um, this is a question for Supervisor Hutchins and Supervisor Gray, we did get the workforce program in place, correct?
Workforce? Yeah, we're part of workforce, county and the city and.
So the.
Yeah.
So the, the Rita, we're waiting on the school board to send us their, that's what you're talking about?
Ye- yes.
The Rita, we're waiting on the school board, they got it approved last, we're supposed to get some minutes and send them to AG's office, it's supposed to.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, well, we need to okay that approved the funding for it, yes.
Okay, so once we get that.
Once the Rita's approved, then the funding goes through.
Okay, so at the, hopefully at the next meeting, I do have a a student that worked in uh, justice court. That is very interested in coming back, and we could use the help to, we got back filing that needs to be done, and uh, and he he was very good this summer. So once we get that in place, I'll have the next board, hopefully at the next meeting, and we can bring him forward to work half part-time.
We have another open for justice court?
No.
No, this is just a part-time for the workforce, for the young men that worked this summer.
Okay.
And then the last thing I have, after a meeting last time, I went through everything in my piles to make sure I had gotten everything approved for the budget. I found one last thing hanging out, um. District Attorney Cotton came to me in May and asked for this, and I just totally forgot to bring it forward. And I was new, okay, so, um, he had asked for a thousand dollars a month supplement to his chief clerk. Um, he has used all of the AOC money that he has for his office supplies and and basically what was left, he's he has given her salary. So he asked us and um, he asked Franklin, Wilkinson and Aeneid County to participate, Wilkinson could not, but Aeneid and Franklin are also participating, but I'm not. I'm not aware of how much they're they're adding a month, but he asked for a thousand from us. To help support his chief clerk to get her salary where it should be. And it's in the budget.
It is.
That was split three ways, but.
Oh, this is like paying Africa that.
That's our part, and then Adams and Franklin are putting up a part.
Okay, Franklin and Franklin said they couldn't do anything.
Good luck, get the money out of him.
Okay.
I say that.
You heard a request? Moved by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion?
Yeah, it's, I don't know, it's just leaving.
It's legal for us to supple- supplement the district attorney's office, but we don't have to.
So I thought we was already doing that.
We do, we give them money for their bag check.
For their.
Unit.
Sarah Delaney victim assistant coordinator.
It was legal, but you don't have to, up to you.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor? Any names, motion carries?
I think that's it for me for today.
All right, thank you. Okay, I've got a uh. This is for uh, Jocelyn White, this the new hire for justice court?
Yes.
Okay. Fourteen dollars an hour, twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars a year. I need a motion.
Who is that?
Jordan White. Jocelyn White. Moved by Ms. Gaines, second by Ms. Middleton. Any discussion?
I will say she did start last week, and she's she's gonna be very good.
All in favor? Any names, motion carries? Phil Windley, we already. Tribal voucher, community approval. Verified. Okay, the AF, AJFC, Community Action Agency. They're having a fundraiser gala on November fourteenth, at six o'clock, at the Natchez Convention Center. I certainly already paid for a table or something on this, but this is just letting everybody know that uh. The gala's coming up on the fourteenth, six o'clock. On the uh, airport thing, uh, guys, I think that was, that was a great thing, uh. It it just took a while, a lot of people, when they say or said we couldn't get it done, but it looks like it's going through, um. It looks like it's gonna cost more than we uh, anticipated. Um, but, um, I ran into uh, Lieutenant Governor Posman the other day. And he said he knew it was gonna cost us more money than what we asked for, and that he said he would be glad to help us, so uh. When when those numbers come up, we we just need to make another request. Um, uh, so it won't touch the cost to taxpayers out of County. Um, to to finish that out, um, but it's gonna, it's gonna be good, I I heard the same thing that that uh, Wes talked about, uh. The simplicity of driving fifteen minutes versus an hour and a half, or and having to get there an hour early at Baton Rouge, or drive three hours and have to be there two hours early in New Orleans, or going to Jackson, and so. Every time you travel, it's just a nightmare, um, for you for your traveling, it it, it takes a lot of fun out of the trip sometimes, but. Oh, this this is gonna be great, and I know it's gonna be a hard, a lot of hard work, it's your your, you've had a huge asset to that. Um, uh, uh, and like to thank the mayor publicly, because uh, he he really went out on a limb for everybody, and uh. It's not the city's airport, it is the county airport, but he he knows how much it's gonna benefit both, so uh, I thank him for that. Um. That's all I have, um, we need a. Close determination.
Oh.
Moved by Mr. Gaines. I'm seconding. All in favor?
Uh.